Okay, I'll quickly review the agenda. We'll have previous minutes, students and school presentations, parent groups, open to the public, three minutes per speaker for no longer than 60 minutes, superintendent's report, correspondence and board comments, the personnel agenda, consent agenda, proposed executive session, and then we'll adjourn. We do have a couple of corrections, and you should all have copies. If you have copies of the agenda there, you'll see them. Under A, on the personnel items, A, the first employee, the effective date rather than 3/4/2013 is 3/7/2013. On the same page, C probationary instructional appointment, the dates are changed from March 5th, 2013 through March 4th, 2016. Now reads March 8th, 2013 through March 7th, 2016. Okay. Oh, excuse me. And then E, appoint coach, has been scratched from the agenda. Do we have a motion? For previous minute?
Motion to approve the previous minutes as...
Oh, we don't have previous minutes attached.
Next meeting.
We don't have minutes attached.
Right.
By accident, that was my mistake. Okay, do we have any students or school presentations tonight? Parent groups? Okay, open to the public, who would like to speak?
Well, here's somebody we know.
Hello, everyone. My name is Meredith Huer. I am a parent of two children at South Avenue School and the chair of the Beacon Arts and Education Commission. I have a couple of questions related to being a parent. The first is, I heard that there is a focus group for the new superintendent search, and I don't know how far along that is or how interested parents would be on that focus group.
What we intend to do, and that's going to happen pretty quick, we're going to speak to the principals to contact their PTOs. And Dr. Walkley is determining the number of participants from each stakeholder group. But once we determine that, the principals will reach out to their PTO officials to get a representative. I'm not sure they will have one from every building because we have six buildings, but we're looking forward to having parents such as yourself involved in that process.
And just out of curiosity, I understand that Dr. Walkley will also be leaving us unfortunately, and I'm wondering what's going to happen with that position.
Well, we're entered the laundry.
That's comforting.
We will be posting that vacancy in the next couple of weeks. And typically, we've got very good response in the past. There's a thing called the online application system for professionals, administrators and teachers in New York State. And we will advertise on that as well as through the BOSIs. And we expect, if the past is any indication, that we should get a good response. We've been, quote, talking it up with people that we think can walk a shoe gum to apply to that because, as you know, Meredith, we need someone to fill those shoes. So that'll be happening, and we'll report more on that in the future. I think it might be interesting to note that if the superintendent process is successful, then the new superintendent, let's say that they'll be appointed sometime in the spring, will start in July 1, they will be instrumental in choosing for the finalist for Dr. Walkley's position because they'll be working with him.
So they get to sort of...
Absolutely.
Okay, that's nice. Okay, the other question I have is maybe not for Henry. In terms of, now that you know what the levy will be, do you know what the gap will be in terms of how much expenditures have risen and then how much you can raise taxes and how much basically will have to be cut from the budget? What the number is?
Actually, that was part of the conversation with specific personnel issues in the last executive. We're looking at that. Before there's determinations on staff reduction, we're looking at all the variables, as you would imagine. Long-term fiscal, responsible fiscal management versus the needs for this year. As reported earlier, tax cap is 3.08. A little better than, maybe I shouldn't say that because some folks would say that's a little worse. But for us, it gives us a little more wiggle room. But there's no question that we'll have to tighten our belts. We don't really know when that exact number is as of this date. We're working closely with all the administrators and directors to look at places where we could save money. I would expect that no later than the first meeting in April, those lists will be made public. But as you would imagine, before anything is made public, we would have to talk with the administrators, the teachers' association, and the actual individuals. I hate to have someone say, "Hey, I heard the board meeting, I'm losing my job."
Right, no, I was more looking for a general number of how much you would have to...
It's really significant, but we don't, we're not quite sure yet. But that'll be certainly broadcast out. You're very astute to ask that, including our remedies to address that issue because the boards made it, I think abundantly clear to us, unless we read the message wrong, that we're going to stay within the property tax cap of 3.08.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello. I'm Deborah Davidovitz. I haven't been able to make many of these meetings, and I'm just curious if there's, how you deal, how you decide when you're taking the executive session? Is that a set time that you guys do that?
Yes. It's the same in every single agenda. There's two. There's one at the beginning of the meeting. It's allowed by law for a specific purpose. And then, as tonight, sometimes at the end, the board goes into executive session. You know, when you're doing things like superintendent searches and other things, they take that time.
Sure, okay. So is that, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, like, obviously, I came right as you guys left. So is there, that's just the natural flow of it where...
Well, we normally have a workshop. At seven o'clock, we normally have a workshop of some form of presentation. And at the close of the presentation, we take our executive session prior to beginning the regular meeting.
This one was particularly tiresome tonight. We apologize. But we try to keep it within a half hour or so, but it went over.
Oh, no. Okay, thank you.
Hey, here's somebody we know also. How are you?
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of random thoughts. In consideration with our upcoming budget, you know, that we're, as a board of ed, you're in the business of watching, you know, all the dollars and pennies and nickels. I hope that we are very careful, you know, that we take, you know, that scalpel instead of the, rather than the hatchet in making cuts because, you know, they're going to have tremendous impacts on the education that our children receive. The larger classes are, the less face-to-face work time that the teacher has to deal with the individual students and their questions. And it really does have, it really does have an impact on learning. So I'm sure that you're very cognizant of that. I know Larry, you know, argues for that all the time. But, you know, we really need, especially in these days. For me personally, if you went beyond the 3%, you know, I would look to get that 60% vote, I would be in favor of that. But I understand the position that you're in among the taxpayers in the district. Another point is your agenda, the way that is coming out now. I'm not sure how this came out, but, you know, it's been, it's a little more cumbersome to deal with the, finding the board document, the board agenda on the website rather than just going to Board of Education and then going to agendas and pulling up a PDF file of the agenda. There's more that's involved in it. It's, you know, then there are other breakdowns that you have to go to in order to get to, you know, the various sections opposed to just being a single PDF file. It doesn't, doesn't bode well for transparency. Okay, the idea of having a, of having a website is that it should be very easy for citizens to be able to navigate. And going through the additional steps to look at the different aspects of, of your agenda is, it doesn't do that. It takes more cumbersome. One final point in terms of preparing for next year, and I wish John was here, but I understand he has a broken arm. My granddaughter's in the AP history class. And last summer, when they were supposed to start to do all their work, they didn't, there weren't enough books, and the books didn't come in on time. We're now able to get all the summer work completed. So there was a lot more catch-up that took place in September. I would hope that we're able to do a little, find the money to preorder the books that they need for the AP classes so that the students aren't behind the date, also to speak, come the new school year if you're taking an AP class where they would have to have this material before the school year begins, where they do their work over summer. Thank you.
Would someone else like to speak?
Since I'm sort of making a statement, I just want to be able to look at the people as well, and you, rather than have my back and my butt to you guys. Good evening, members of the board and the Beacon community. I'm Carla Springer, and I have two students in the Beacon School District. I've seen great changes throughout the years in this district. And I most excited, I was most excited when they built this high school. It's clear that whoever designed this high school had done their research on the importance of arts and education in our children's lives. There's a film production studio. There's an art rooms, there's bands, there are chorus rooms. But theater is the most amazing thing, I think you all agree. And I'd heard someone say just the other day that our theater is the second largest off-Broadway theater in New York. If that's true, it's amazing. I hope it's true. And we have an art exhibit on which I hope everyone got to see the art today from the elementary school. Thank you, Harvey, for moving the meeting here so that we could all partake in the art exhibit. I was thrilled to learn that the board is deeply committed to the arts program here. A few years back, the Board of Education wasn't as supportive. And band teachers were cut from the elementary schools. Art teachers were cut from the high school. Now, students that want to study art can't because there aren't enough classes. And children, when they're at that age, the best age to learn an instrument, don't. A great deal of research supports the direct connection between arts education and academic improvement. Whether one looks at the studies of students' SAT scores or their math scores or their capacity for learning a foreign language, a tremendous body of evidence indicates a correlation between arts and academics as students develop both the left and right side of the brains. Through the arts, children are able to increase their capacity for spatial reasoning and their ability to think creatively. Skills developed through participation in the arts are increasingly important in the workplace and therefore the key to a successful career. I want to thank you. Thank you for your support of the arts. And let's continue to give our students and our children the tools that they need to succeed. Thank you very much.
Would someone else like to speak?
Hi, someone else you know. Hey, everyone, good evening. My name is Sarah Terrell. I am a Beacon Arts and Education Foundation board member and a parent of a third grader at South Avenue Elementary. I just wanted to kind of springboard on what Carla said and just publicly thank and acknowledge this board's commitment to the arts. I wanted to personally thank Harvey and Barbara for, and especially Anne Marie, for meeting with the foundation a countless amount of times and just publicly acknowledge that the district has officially signed up with the BOSI's Arts and Education Coaster again. The Beacon District has not been with the BOSI's Arts and Education Coaster since the '07-'08 year. And at that time, they put approximately $30,000 worth of arts and education programming through the coaster. So to us, it's a big, big deal that Harvey and Barbara have committed to this Arts and Education coaster. And we just want to publicly thank you. And I think, you know, it needs to be said to each building, all the teachers, all the PTOs, and we're in it now. So I'm interested to find out how you guys can help get the information out to each building that, yes, we're a part of the coaster. What are you already doing in your building that might fall under the coaster that we can get money back for the district? There's thousands of dollars probably being spent in this district through PTOs and PTA's on arts programming that is not going through the coaster, that could go through the coaster, and therefore the money comes back the next year. So there are a couple of things also. There seems to be a culture, when I talk to PTA's or principals or people, there's two things I'm hearing about BOSIs. The first one is, eh, it's not worth it. It's too much trouble. I don't really understand that way of thinking because as we all know, Beacon is an arts community. Beacon is full of arts, it's known as an artist community. And what I worry is that the city of Beacon is going to go somewhere, and the school district doesn't go with it. The school district isn't known as, as a thriving arts district, just like the town. So I'm asking, how can we get the word out now to the district? Because I know I can't do it alone. I'm visiting with each PTA. I'm visiting with each PTO. I'm speaking with teachers. But I'd love to hear just, you know, how the district can help get the word out because I think we all know how important this coaster is.
Well, thank you for your thank yous. There's a few people here that, sitting in the audience, that are instrumental in moving the arts foundation even closer than it has been to the district by your support of the coaster, your financial support of the coaster, and those type of things. But I would just encourage you, as excited as you are about this, that you continue to work, particularly with the lovely and charming Dr. Walkley. Because, and I see a number of our wonderful administrators here. They know what I'm going to tell you. This is a, and you've heard me say this, but it's worth saying again publicly. This is a very challenging year for schools in New York State because of the region's reform agenda. I've been in the business 42 years. This is the toughest it's ever been, at the same time that I'm giving us any money. So the principals are forced to learn a whole new lexicon, all new theories, all new practices, and certainly all the teachers are. And they're inundated. There's a lot of stress, and we see the signs of it every single day, where people try to recreate themselves at the same time they're trying to run their regular life, which we all know sometimes can be quite challenging. So I, please work with us because as much as Barbara and I, an art and music teacher, want this to happen, and you're absolutely right, the school needs to step up to the plate, it has to happen within the context of what's going on now. There's no choice. Otherwise, it will fail.
Right. I completely agree.
So stick with us. By fact, I think we have a meeting set up pretty soon, maybe by now. Yeah, so...
And that's what I want to say. I want to say, I want to present the foundation and parents as a solution. We want help. We want to work with the inundated teachers and principals. We want to provide a solution when someone's like, "I can't deal with this. There's too much already." We want to be here to say, "You know what? We're going to help you. We're going to help you." That's all, that's all we, that's all we want to say.
So, and we're going to provide the pathway if you allow us. So thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Great to see everybody out tonight. Some friendly faces.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Tina Chan Sweeney. I've got a daughter and kid who are in that force. I spoke to you last week about the superintendent, the search. Just a, I, I just want to impress upon you about how many people in this community are so interested and want to be involved and want to know what's going on. And the reason why I keep coming up here and asking questions is simply because we don't know what's going on. And I guess I'm trying to figure out how to find out this information. And things, things like, who's going to be, is there somebody in line for the assistant superintendent position? At this point, what are the qualifications that you're looking for for the two candidates that are left at this point? And really, how does, like Meredith had mentioned, how does a parent know what's going on in the school system right now?
I think I understand your question. And you're going to be a bit frustrated, but legally, the Board of Education, the most important job they do is hiring and evaluating a superintendent. That's one of the reasons they're elected. So the community, it's not a totally transparent process. Because if it were, we wouldn't get anybody to apply. We have people in other jobs that are saying, "I want to apply, but unless I'm going to be the person or one of the top two persons, I don't, I'm not going to risk my present job." And we've been involved in this process through a number of searches in other districts that have been successful. And we're working with the board to find the most qualified candidates. So the public will not be apprised of all the details. It just can't happen. It's just like when we hire a new principal or a new teacher, the parents can't be sitting as spectators. It's personnel, we're talking about people's livelihood, about their confidential histories, et cetera, et cetera. All I can promise you is that, as I reported earlier to you last week, that we started the process with 24 people. And how we got those people is we advertised statewide and nationally. We put a brochure together based on the qualifications through a public meeting. I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to attend or not. And that criteria was chosen by the board. It was put in an announcement brochure that was very well done by Tom Hotelling. Thanks, Tom, wherever you are. And it was sent to every single school district of BOSIs in New York State. We received 24 applicants. They were thoroughly vetted. There was a small pool, there was a screening process. They were further vetted, and the board met three candidates last week. What they're going to attempt to do is eliminate one candidate and send two on to spend a day in the district. If you recall, we spoke about that. The, after the two days, the board will choose, hopefully choose a finalist if they find one of the two that they like. And then they'll have to negotiate terms of employment, which is very important. If someone's going to move to Beacon, move their whole family here, they have to be sure that they have some assurance that they will, I guess, some compensation. We suspect that the board agrees that in early April, there will be an announcement made about that in the full background of the individual. So we hope, our goal would be that we find the superintendent as you ever had here in Beacon. Please, thank you.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to impress upon you that there are quite a few people interested in understanding what's going on. And I think it's because of the history as well and what we've seen in the past. So there's, I mean, I think there's, I don't want you to think that, like, "We're frustrated and we're coming at you." We just want to know the information is really what it comes down to. And then also just the question about assistant superintendent.
Oh, yes, that's, I think that question was asked and answered before. But if you like, I can reiterate that to you. That in the next week or so, that will be advertised, criteria that Dr. Walkley and I will set based on what we understand the requirements of her job as the assistant superintendent for instruction and personnel, as we know that. The process will culminate, and we'll go through all the applications. We'll do a pre-screening, and we're going to bring three finalists. There may be a committee involved, I'm not sure quite yet. We just started that process. We typically use a committee for principals and above. But the new superintendent will be intimately involved in choosing the finalist. And we believe that we will have somebody of very high quality.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for asking questions.
Would anyone else like to speak? Thank you.
I just gave my home report. I'd like to thank the elementary art teachers for the wonderful art display tonight. We really enjoyed it. I hope you, if you haven't had a chance to see it, I think the gallery is still open. It's only $5.
If only.
So that's been pretty cool. I also want to announce that it's Music in Our Schools Week this week. And there'll be concerts on Tuesday and Thursday at 7:00 right here at the high school. So you can get there. I hope board members can slip away and hear a few, few numbers. I was going to talk about the superintendent search, but that's, that's been done. Next week, our meeting's going to be, our next meeting is going to be March 18, and that will be at Sergeant Elementary School. And we'll have the pleasure of Tarkon Jane. We'll do a report. He probably will be in there more than an hour and a half. The board typically... The board typically, just for those people that do not know, one and a half hour before the meeting, they get a tour of the school, look at all the student artwork, et cetera, et cetera, in the buildings. And Sergeant will be the last, the sixth building that we get an opportunity to visit this year. With the risk of embarrassing someone that we could care greatly about, I want to, it was mentioned by Mr. Stark, we move to paperless board meetings. It saves the district a lot of money, and it'll take us a while to get the bugs out. But the only way that this is working is because of our fabulous board clerk, who has spent countless hours, without exaggeration, figuring it out with a consultant and working through the bugs. We're going through various iterations of it right now. The board, we appreciate your patience. Like I said, it seems to get more and more user-friendly for us. We're still figuring it out. But the reason that, of moving to education across the country moving to this, as you can imagine, how much money we're saving on paper and toner and electricity and time. It's just, the copier says, Kelly, I miss you, really. So thanks, Kelly.
Do we have any board comments tonight?
Well, I would also like to thank the elementary art teachers for providing the art for our gallery tonight. It was nice that the entire board was able to arrive early to enjoy their art.
Okay. May I have a motion for the personnel agenda?
Motion to approve the personnel agenda, items A through F as a fraction. With that being said, I said A through F, you have the personal items that you have removed E. So, but F is still on the agenda.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda, items 13.02 through 13.05.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Yes, we have an introduction. Do we want to introduce the teacher that's on the agenda?
There are teachers that's on the agenda. Would Mr. Volhard like to introduce him?
Well, we're very happy. We had a rapid but very competitive search committee to hire a teacher for our life skills class at Rumbout Middle School. And I'm happy to present the person who stood out the most for us in that process, and that's Mr. Brian Lang. He's been with us for a number of years as a teaching assistant at various elementary schools, at the high school, and now he'll be at the middle school. We're pleased to have him. He has some great skills. He's working hard on developing them further. He's got great ability to connect with kids and parents, and we really are delighted to look forward to working with him at Rumbout, starting on the...
Friday.
Friday. We'll change it again, right? We congratulate you on your appointment.
Thank you very much. I think you said everything I was going to say. I've been in the sector for a few years and I'm looking forward to continuing my time here. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian. Pleasure, board.
Motion for executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for coming out.